Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order, the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for March 12th, 2019. Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Commissioner Braun.
Yeah.
Commissioner Offenreith.
Here.
Mayor Marion.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all of the elected bodies in attendance.
Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, God, on behalf of our citizens and our elected body. I ask for a hedge of protection over all of us, God. I ask that you watch over our police department, our fire department, our EMS, God, and that you also watch over our military. Be with us as we're here tonight and we leave here this evening. In Jesus's name, amen. All right, there is going to be an amendment to the agenda under public presentations because I'm sure most of you don't want to hear about our sewer and water plan update that's going to take a while. So we're going to go ahead and swear in our officers first, and then we'll move forward with the scout presentation.
There will be attached after, though, for the...
Come in front? Mr. Townsend.
Sir.
Will you come, please? Thank you. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. "I, William John Townsend..."
"I, William John Townsend..."
"...do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"I swear to support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland..."
"I will bear a faithful and true allegiance to the State of Maryland."
"...and support the Constitution and laws thereof..."
"And support the Constitution and laws thereof."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my skill and judgment..."
"To the best of my skill and judgment."
"...diligently and faithfully..."
"Diligently and faithfully."
"...without partiality or prejudice..."
"Without partiality or prejudice."
"...execute the office of Rising Sun Police Officer..."
"Execute the office of Rising Sun Police Officer."
"...according to the Constitution and the laws of the state."
"According to the Constitution and the laws of the state."
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Sir. Josie Davis?
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. "I, Stephane Lamont Josie Davis..."
"I, Stephane Lamont Josie Davis."
"...do swear that I will support the Constitution..."
"Do swear that I will support the Constitution."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States."
"...and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland..."
"That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland."
"...and support the Constitution and laws thereof..."
"And support the Constitution and laws thereof."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my skill and judgment..."
"To the best of my skill and judgment."
"...diligently and faithfully..."
"Diligently and faithfully."
"...without partiality or prejudice..."
"Without partiality or prejudice."
"...execute the office of Rising Sun Police Officer..."
"Execute the office of Rising Sun Police Officer."
"...according to the Constitution and the laws of the state."
"According to the Constitution and the laws of the state."
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
About thanks. Commissioner Pearson. You just got four, please. Congratulations.
Thanks, I so appreciate it. Can we get a round of applause?
The two individuals, the federal officer and the Northeast officer, were basically mentors for these two gentlemen growing up, and they requested that they be present in their badge. That's why you had that happen. So thank you for coming out. Sergeant Nits and Officer Williams from Northeast P.
Very good, P.
All right, we're going to go ahead and allow a presentation by the House family.
Okay, so...
Yeah, we're missing one.
Well, I'll explain that in a moment. Two weeks ago, at our Court of Honor, Rayland and I each awarded Mr. Warnock the mentor pin. Unfortunately, he could not make it that day, and for his constant support on our projects, we would like to award them this evening. He has put just about an equal amount of effort, if not more, into each of our projects, and to that we thank you.
I've got, like, stabbing my chest, aren't I?
Yeah, I got the thing.
This is going to be cool.
I won't hold it. Okay. All right.
Watch out, Dave.
I get one of them.
Watch out, Dave.
I was just going to play some...
Come on, poke him. Poke him. Make a jump.
All right. Okay, I guess I'm doing this. Okay.
All right, Taylor, get him.
Dave, we did pay the workers' car premiums.
Right, that's good. Does this make Dave... Is Dave a Weeblo now?
A Weeblo?
Got it. Sorry.
All right, round of applause for Dave. And again, we thank the House triplets, as well as their family, for all they've done. I'm sure the additions at all the parks will definitely be enjoyed for years to come.
Yeah, and I really wish I could have made it. Unfortunately, just the timing of my business trip just didn't work out, and I even considered flying back. And the only problem is I would have had to have been on the plane at the time the ceremony started, so to get back to Austin in time. So I really wish I would have made it, but, you know, I heard that Commissioner Offenreith did a great job representing me, so I thank him for that.
Thank you for allowing us, inviting us. We appreciate... We enjoyed it. Pauline and I enjoyed it. You should be very proud of the accomplishments you guys have made, and we appreciate all the work you've done with Commissioner Warnock and our parks on behalf of the residents of this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so first, under public presentations, is a water and sewer plan update. Town administrator, do you have that?
Yes, I do. So you're familiar to some degree with this process here. The town of Rising Sun is required every couple of years, or as needed, to submit changes to Cecil County in reference to the town's master sewer and water plan. And essentially, what that means is the town is supposed to do some analysis of where future growth might occur, and then how water and sewer services would be provided to those areas. So it's something that, since I've been here since '07, we've done about four or five times. So part of that process is to have the elected body pass a resolution to approve the submittal of our plan to Cecil County. As I had suggested at last month's meeting, is that the county has been working on their amendment, as is required by law, for some time. But the town of Rising Sun had a major undertaking at having to redo its comprehensive plan, do some work in its zoning code before it could really even get involved in trying to figure out all the details of the comprehensive plan. So we anticipated not being able to make the deadline of when they wanted our amendments, and we articulated that to the county. So the master sewer and water plan can be amended at any time, as I suggested, as needed. So the timing is worked out now that we are able to submit our plan. So essentially speaking, the master sewer and water plan is basically made up of two sections. And the black language here, or the language in black is what is currently in the master sewer... Or the master... In this case here, I'm looking at the water system. The black is what is currently the language, and the red is the proposed language. And you will see that we have a lot of comprehensive changes and recommendations that are all centered around the fact that the town has finally been able to solve its water and sewer issues. So it is now able to practice what the mayor is often referred to as being open for business. Before I go further, I want to make sure that residents understand that this is... This goes hand in glove, so to speak, to what the town has been trying to achieve for many years now, which was we had environmental issues that we were required by the state and the U.S. Department of Environmental Protection many, many years ago to fix these environmental issues in both, more specifically, the sewer plant, but also in the water distribution system. And that required us to put the town into a moratorium that we've talked numerous times about the significant financial impact that that has had on the town. As we talked about previously, the town had to do something, had to spend a quantity of money. And the cost to repair both of those systems just grew exponentially over the years because back when the problems were first identified in the late 1990s, the town was very hesitant at that time to make any of the repairs. So repairs, it might have cost $1 or $2 million back in the late 1990s, ended up costing the town a total of about $26 million when they were finally completed in 2015, and then the water line in 2019. So with the very high significant cost associated with making both of those required repairs, the town had the option, and I'm just going to give you round numbers, we could have spent about $23 million, $22 million to just solve the water and sewer issues, but the town would have been significantly handcuffed in handicap in its ability to ever make the sewer and water rates more manageable for our community, meaning we would have spent $22, $23 million, got just enough water and sewer capacity for what we needed. And then the residents that are currently in the system, for the most part, would have been paying that debt service on that $22, $23 million for the next 40 years. So by spending a little bit more money, investing more money, the town is particularly... Particularly in the case of the water system, was able to double the capacity of the water system. So that puts us in a position to now be able to sell water and sewer to the region to get a greater number of users in the system, which is a more effective way to bring down the user rates. I also want to throw this out there, we've talked about this many times before, that the town investing money to expand the system going forward is a much better financial model for our residents than simply taking residual money and paying down the debt. And what I mean by that is our total debt is $26 million. If we were to take $1 or $2 million and put that towards the debt, it essentially would just mean that the loan would be paid off in 38 years or 37 years instead of 40 years. So the return on that type of investment would be way, way in the future, and it would not provide any relief for our residents. And so what we are proposing to do, as we've begun to make more money in the system, we want to invest in the system because getting more users in the system and collecting impact fees is going to have a greater one-to-one impact on people's sewer and water rates in the next couple of years, as opposed to simply just giving the money to USDA and paying the principal down in 38 years instead of 30... Instead of 40 years. So there are a lot of... There's a lot of long-range planning involved in this, and I want to highlight some of the items. And this is similar, a much shorter version of the presentation that we made at the last meeting. And the main thing that I want you to see is this is the incorporated limits of the town of Rising Sun. And in doing our master water plan, we basically take what is the existing area for the town of Rising Sun. This is the town's existing master water plan, and we are essentially replacing that with a much larger area to meet the expectations of requests that we have had. And what do I mean by the request? Right now, we have received letters and inquiries from multiple properties, and I'm going to show in a second, that is equal to about 500,000 gallons per month of additional water requests. That's more... That's more water being sold, which comes into the system. And again, that puts us in a position to flatline the increases of water rates going forward, if not lower the water rates going forward. So that is... This here, in a nutshell, is the town's proposed water system. As I showed at the last meeting, it is not that much different than the water system that was part of the approval... Actually, it's a lot smaller than the water system that was approved under the SRBC allocation, which was for 1 million gallons to be allocated to the region. You can see that's what that area would cover. So it's a much smaller service area. But more importantly, it is closely related to the request for water that we have received from the area. So I'm going to take these letters out of the way. And you can see the different locations going out 273 that have requested to get water and sewer from the town of Rising Sun. And as I said at the last meeting, if you look at the way our growth area is constructed, we are not looking to have large areas of the 273 corridor suddenly come into the town of Rising Sun. We are looking to get water to the locations that have requested water from us now. So there has been a misnomer going around in the county that, A, the town is going to require all these property owners out here to annex into the town, and if there's a water line running in front of their property, that we are going to require them to connect. That couldn't be any further from the truth because these are county properties. So we would not be in a position where we are requiring them to connect. So there are some service connections going out to the east. There are service connections request going up towards the north. I'm going to get the letters out of the way. You can see different locations going to the north, represented by the blue pushpins. There is requested service areas going to the south that include places like West Nottingham Academy and the Hunter Sail Bond. As I said at the last meeting, these service areas are very similar to the service areas that Cecil County has projected for the town dating back to 2010 in their comprehensive plan, where they showed areas that should be getting water service from the town of Rising Sun. So you can see, we're pretty much in line with that, with the exception of we've had some additional people step up and request to get those services from the town. Give me one second, I'm going to get these out of the way so we can get back to our map. So this essentially is the service area for the town of Rising Sun. And in addition, as we talked about at the last meeting, this really comes down to the fact that the residents of Rising Sun are also residents of the county. And the county has sold its water rights to Artesian Water Company. And in doing so, there is this idea that wherever water services would be required in the county, those services would have to be given to the for-profit entity of Artesian. And the town's position, and the reason why we have been so steadfast in our commitment to this, is that we feel that the residents of Rising Sun are taxpayers in the county, and quite frankly, they should be given the right of first refusal to sell any water since it's our residents who had to pay for this water system and sewer system. So this comes down to us sort of stating our claim in the master sewer and water plan that the town of Rising Sun be granted a franchise area. And this franchise area would be the areas highlighted who are in the blue border area. And what that is... What the... What the master sewer and water plan is suggesting is that we're not looking to grow out into that area. We just think that if there's any development that occurs, or more importantly, any health and safety issues related to failing septic's or failing wells, that the town of Rising Sun essentially be given a right of first refusal to service those areas. And our request is consistent with a request that the town of Northeast recently got in their master sewer and water plan, which is a service area exclusive to the town of Northeast, who, if you can imagine, is right in the middle of where Artesian is serving water. So the town of Northeast basically took the same position of, hey, our taxpayers have a system that they paid for, and they should be able to expand that system before Artesian does. And so the town of Northeast was able to get a exclusive service area. So you can see, we are requesting to have an exclusive service area also. The thing that's important to talk about in this service area, as I said before, is that there's always the concern that the town of Rising Sun is looking to turn this entire area into growth and fundamentally change the rural character of the area. And that in itself couldn't be any further from the truth also because we are actually... Waiting for this to disappear. We are actually looking to change all of the zoning in that service area to adopt the county's zoning code into our zoning code. And if, and that's the big if, the town's not making people connect. If there is a desire to either develop or if there's a life and health, safety issue, that the town is going to help control the rural character of the area by adopting the same zoning that the county has. And so this is a different type of mapping system. But if you can see, that's what the county zoning map looks right now. And our system cannot capture what is called the rural residential area in the same way, which is basically blue vertical lines there. But we have adopted the same area, which is shown in blue. And when I toggle these on and off, you can see the similarities in there. We're not looking to change the rural character. However, one of the things we are also looking to do is because potential development can have a negative impact on the town of Rising Sun, especially right on our borders, we are suggesting that in our... When we annex these areas into our growth area here, then these are the phases of growth, we are also going to be incorporating additional green belts and open spaces so that we don't get an oversaturation of development in the proposed growth area of the town of Rising Sun that significantly changes the appearance of the greater Rising Sun area. So we will be adopting green belts, which is above and beyond what the county's zoning code calls for right now because, again, we want to preserve natural features like wooded areas and streams and water, so forth and so on. And then, in addition to that, in the annexed area, we are... Let me find this one real quick. We are looking to take areas in and around the town of Rising Sun that are right on our borders and change the zoning to some degree. So the areas that are highlighted in green is where we want to reduce the density. And what I mean by that, some of these areas are currently in county zoning districts. It would allow four houses per acre, which could be a huge explosion of housing in the area, which, as we've said before, would result in all those vehicles trying to get through our intersection of 273 and 274 right outside our door here. So what we're looking to do is if those properties want to develop, they can either develop under the county's zoning regulations, but they're going to be severely limited because of lack of public water and sewer. And if they come to us to be able to buy water and sewer from us, we are going to have them develop at densities that are less than what the town of Rising Sun would... Or what the county would require. So in essence, if the county would allow four houses per acre, we would change the zoning to only allow two houses per acre. And so the areas highlighted in green are where we are looking to basically reduce the densities. The areas highlighted in the cream color are areas where we are looking to increase the density. But if you can see out on the Route 1 corridor, we want to create like an enterprise zone or an economic opportunity zone where we can provide incentives for companies to come in and build and construct or develop land that provides good-paid jobs in numbers so that our residents have good, sustainable employment in the area. So we're upzoning these areas along Route 1 to further advance the idea of an economic development zone that has a trickle-down benefit to all of the town because if there's 100 people working out in this corridor 10 years from now, and they're all getting good salaries, then they have bought homes in the town of Rising Sun, and they've invested their money in the town of Rising Sun. When lunchtime comes around, they are going to be coming to the businesses in Rising Sun to get lunch or shopping at Martin's. So it's sort of a trickle-down economics is what we're trying to accomplish here with this. And this is all brought on by the opportunity of having invested in our water and sewer system and continuing to invest in our water and sewer system. So going back to the master water and sewer plan and looking at the master water plan, basically you give an explanation of your current system, and then we start to talk about all of the areas that have requested water from the town of Rising Sun. And the structure of the document matches those blue pushpins that I showed you earlier, where there is expansion to the east, expansion to the north, and expansion to the south, and then also expansion to the southeast. There are many properties that are asking to get water from us because there are health and safety issues out there. We have a couple that have failing septic's, and we have a couple that have contaminated wells that need to get services from the town. More importantly, we feel that we are putting property owners in the region. We are protecting the rights of property owners. We feel that if a property owner has a particular property in the county that is zoned for business development, why shouldn't they be able to develop that land to business... To a business development nature by getting water and sewer from the town of Rising Sun? And let me give you a quick example of why that's important. If you look at the Route 1 corridor where Gibney's is located out there and where Krieger's hardware store used to be, and the building's still there, they had a difficult time selling that land out there because... time selling that land out there because of, because they're commercial properties, they are required to have fire sprinkler systems in there. And when you look at the geology of the area of Rising Sun, which is identified in the county's comprehensive plan, the rock, the nature of the rock in this area typically only yields about five to 25 gallons per minute of yield, which is okay for residential properties, but it's not good for commercial properties. So there were properties, we had a variety of people that contacted us wanting to develop those areas out there, but they ran into a roadblock because there's no way they could put a big enough well or a big enough septic system out there to accommodate the business that they are looking to do. So those are the types of requests that we are getting. We're also, as I said, there are some properties out on 272 that have been negatively impacted by leaking petroleum tanks from the gas station. Because we have gotten a request, or we've had inquiries from the Cecil County School District about extending water to Rising Sun Elementary, Calvert Elementary, and Rising Sun High School, we've gotten requests to, to be considered, for us to consider them as a possible receiver of water and sewer for a variety of reasons, to help them with those struggles with water quality issues, and then also to cut down on the wear and tear associated with maintaining those. Anyone who's familiar with Calvert Elementary School knows that the school had some failing septic systems a while back, and they had to basically take up the remaining land around the elementary school to put new drainage fields in. And if you go there now, there are trailers in which a lot of the students are getting their education in. The school cannot put additions onto the building because there's no available land because of the failing septic systems. So if there was a need to have more kids go to that school, it results in those kids being bused to other school districts because they can't expand the building. So getting water and sewer out to a location like that enables them to get rid of the trailers and to use their available land to put additions on the building for more classrooms. Another common theme is if you look at Calvert Manor Nursing Home, they have requested water and sewer from us because they have a significant waiting list for seniors and people that are, need medical care on a sort of temporary or long-term basis, they don't have enough beds and rooms out there. So they have said that if they could get off of their well and septic, they could put additions on that building and provide even more rooms. So in essence, what I'm saying to you is that the town of Rising Sun has been working for many years to be a player in this region. Water and sewer is, is just an invaluable resource for any municipality. That's what makes economic development happen. That's what makes the, the elected body be able to provide more services and tend to the needs of its residents by being able to sell water and sewer and promote more growth. So what you, what the board is considering tonight is a resolution that would adopt amendments to the town's master water plan and master sewer plan to accomplish all of those, those initiatives there. And I really think it's a very accurate statement to say that yes, the town of Rising Sun is open for business, and we should feel good about that.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the water and sewer plan update, the master sewer and water plan update?
I make a motion, we approve the updated master water and sewer plan.
Seth.
There's a motion and a second?
May I, may I suggest what you actually need to do is adopt the resolution?
Okay.
The resolution, if, mayor, if you want to read it into the record.
All right. Do I have a copy of the resolution, Calvin?
Yes.
No, no, all right. I didn't have a copy. All right, so it's Resolution 2019 dash zero two, which is the Rising Sun 2019 update to the Cecil County Master Sewer and Water Plan. All right, so I'm going to skip the boilerplate. All right. Where's section nine five zero three of the environmental article of the annotated code of Maryland titled "County Plans Require Cecil County to Have a Water and Sewage Plan", and where's section nine dash five zero four of the environmental article of the annotated code of Maryland titled "Subsidiary Plans Requires the County to Incorporate Into the County's Plan All or Parts of Subsidiary Plans for Each Town and/or Municipal Corporation That Has Existed or Planned Development in the County", and where's "The subsidiary plan for the town of Rising Sun's water and sewer systems are currently listed in sections three, two, eight, and four, point, I guess, dash, four, one, eight, respectively, of the current Cecil County Master Sewer and Water Plan", and where's "Cecil County is finalizing the adoption of an amendment to their plan of which the town would like to have its plan submitted as part of the adoption process", and where's "The town of Rising Sun, having completed the previous called-upon upgrades and expansion of its water and wastewater systems, is now positioned to address various requests for those water and wastewater services, both in the town and beyond the town limits", and where's "The town of Rising Sun has created a plan as reflected in the master sewer and water plan for upgrades, enhancements to the water system to ensure safe quantities of water supply and general overall health and safety of water quality", and where's "The town has completed various amendments to its comprehensive plan and has submitted such plans to the Maryland Department of Planning's clearinghouse, review and expects to formally adopt this plan at the conclusion of the 60-day review period", and where's "The town has developed a municipal growth area and annexation plan to address numerous requests received from various property owners beyond the town limits that are requesting water and sewer services to help enhance health and safety issues, economic development, and the reduction of capital equipment expenses", and where's "The final design of this water line requires a text amendment to the existing plan and updates to the master water plan, water service district maps, and therefore the mayor and commissioners have reviewed the attached packet and hereby approve of these text amendments and map updates and further authorize the formal submission of these documents to the Cecil County Planning Commissioner and County Council for their review and consideration. Therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed approved and adopted this resolution on the 12th day of March 2019." Can I get a motion for Resolution 2019 dash zero two, Rising Sun 2019 update to the Cecil County Master Water and Sewer Plan?
Mayor, I hate to be the, the fly in the ointment, but you technically have a motion on the floor. The person who made the motion previously should-
Amend.
-should request or withdraw the motion.
I make a motion, I request, just withdraw.
Withdraw.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And I make a motion to adopt the town of Rising Sun Resolution 2009 dash zero two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I just want to thank Calvin for all his hard work on this. I know a lot of time has been spent, this town board. What you're seeing here is just a brief glimpse of what we've overviewed in the past two weeks. So we've done a lot of hard work on this, and hopefully Cecil County Council will consider adopting this amendment. Can I get a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Citizens input, would anyone like to speak this evening?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Is there like an open forum later on for questions?
This is, citizens' input is basically your time. It's about six minutes that you can ask anything you want, you just have to do it from the podium.
Well, yeah, but you're not going to answer it.
Yeah.
So my name's Nicole. I live on Tidewater Drive.
Okay.
On Saturday, we had a water main break, and I'm assuming underneath the street. So I'm, my question is, I see the cones out there, I see the waters obviously stopped coming up from underneath the street. Essentially, my question is, was the plan of action, has pipe been fully repaired? Are there further repairs that are going to need to happen?
Okay.
Tidewater Drive?
Did I say Tidewater?
I'm sorry, what was the name of the road?
Tidewater.
No, it's not Tidewater.
Oh.
That's my old address. It is, what the heck, where'd that, Turtleback.
Turtleback, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. That, that has, that has been fixed as of yesterday. Once the weather breaks and blacktop plants open, we will go in and start making repairs to, final repairs to the road itself. The repairs you see now on the road are temporary.
I kind of figured it.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any more? Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. During the last two-week period, there have been no significant trends with crimes to report. As a follow-up items, the signs for Center Square have been put in place. The signs that say "Do not block the intersection", they are in place. The officers have been instructed to enforce the signs immediately. It's going to take a lot of educating and changing public behavior to achieve our goal of not allowing them to block the intersection. So it's going to take some time, but be prepared. If you block the intersection, you will be greeted by an officer and some type of enforcement act is going to be taken. Secondly, the, of course, daylight savings time went into place over the weekend, the past weekend, the weather started to get a little bit warmer, and as you'll see, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic starting to occur. Today, Mayor Marion and I went down to Veterans Park and placed some signs for children at play to give motorists a warning that they're going to be children out and about walking to the Little League fields and parks. It's also a heads up that if your driving habits or your operating of a motor vehicle is not safe, you will be, again, greeted by an officer and some type of enforcement act is going to be taken. The signs were placed out at Veterans Park, but they will also be some outside of Diddy Richardson Park. And Valley View, the tow-away signs have been ordered. Once they are arrived, they will be put in place. And if you are parking along Valley View Drive, you are subject to tow at your expense. So all of our past enforcement efforts have gone with little effectiveness in changing the behavior of the public. When this happens and your vehicle's towed, I guess the message will be clear, you need to stop parking there. The children at play signs for Brian's Grace have also been ordered and should be arriving shortly. Lastly, the spring brings on many events in the town of Rising Sun. We will have the Little League Parade on April 13th. Be prepared for the traffic diversions, detours. The Tiger Trial will occur on May 18th, and of course, the Sun Fest will be on June 1st. Look for more notification to come about those events, and be prepared for the detours. And lastly, the updates on the uniform. I have spoke with many agencies throughout the county and throughout the state, and as far away as, I'm going to get the town wrong, but a small, small municipality in Pennsylvania, we are all striking out with finding someone to replicate uniforms. The search is still on, but for now, we're going to be piecemealing uniforms together. The unfortunate thing is, those two young men that we swore in earlier today, they look great, but they are refurbished uniforms. The quality of, as you can see, of the custom uniforms have held up over time, and they do look pretty good in what they're wearing. But being able to get those and have them in stock is, is still looking doubtful. That is the end of my report unless there's any questions. Yes, sir?
Chief, would it be more cost-efficient to go ahead and redesign your uniforms to find a new company?
When we do that, we would have to outfit the entire department, so everyone would look alike. If we did, we'd have to do it in baby steps, but that's one of the options, the unfortunate options that we're being forced to take a look at. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
What I'm hearing is if an enterprising individual in the town of Rising Sun wanted to start a business making uniforms, that they could create a pretty good employment center.
Can you so? Jane, can you so?
I know seamstresses, but I'm not one.
Town administrator?
The only thing, and I'm going to piggyback on what Commissioner Althanry said at the last meeting about our Public Works people having lots of water main breaks, and they have, they're up to about maybe 16 water main breaks related, you know, a lot to the weather, and then also the transition from Chester Water. I think it's also important to note, because I know we're going to get this question, part of our master water plan also calls for an initiative to start replacing some of those lines also. So I want to make sure that people realize that we're going to be investing not only in new systems, but also the existing systems too. But again, going back to Ron, Grant, Darrell, and Chris, they have been spending an enormous amount of time fixing water main breaks, and they did have the one this weekend that we just talked about over on Little Brick, Turtleback?
Turtleback.
Turtleback, yep. So I just want to echo what Commissioner Althanry said last month.
On Little Brick, you get there fast.
Yes. So thanks again to Ron and the guys.
Thank you. All right, my, my report is pretty brief tonight. I did read to the first graders at Rising Sun Elementary today, five different classrooms, and if you've ever read The Fox and the Sox, it is definitely a tongue twister that they decided to give me. So the kids made sure to point out that I was rhyming the words correctly. So I also wanted to say again, a huge thank you to everyone that donated to the Friends of Cecil County Victim Services. In under two hours, I raised $610 so that I wouldn't have to get imprisoned at the fundraiser that they're doing for a homicide memorial in Elkton. But it was just amazing to watch people donate and serious crowdfunding happen during that time. So every little bit counts, and a huge thank you to everyone that donated. If you haven't heard already, for Arbor Day, Delmarva Powers is actually giving out trees. There's actually four different types of trees that you can choose from, and they will send them to you free of charge, you just have to fill out your information. So a big thank you to them for doing that. I also did want to recognize the Valley View and Louise Court residents that came. We missed you at the last meeting. I got, I got a nasty gram from a resident saying that nobody ever represents Valley View, so you guys are always here. So a big thank you for being here. And it speaks a lot considering that we typically do not have a lot of people attend the meetings, but we are grateful that they do watch them online. Commissioner Althanry?
They have nothing else to do on Thursday night.
Yeah. Commissioner Althanry?
I thought you had a meeting. Just got some shade, man. Getting out.
I don't have nothing exciting, go ahead. Just two things. One, now that the time has changed, we've had a little break in the weather, I've seen people already starting to clean up some of the damage from the winter, tree branches and stuff, leaves. So Judy and her staff will be putting another flyer in the water bill this, this month with the rules of yard waste pickup. So every Monday, we pick up yard waste, so if you have stuff to start going out, we can add that to probably snow plowing and, and, and water main breaks for the spring for Public Works. So one other thing, at our next meeting, March 26th, you're really going to want to be here. I have a special guest coming to talk about all the great things Cecil County Library and particularly Rising Sun Library has to offer. So come out, so you can ask questions, or make sure you watch this, because it's going to be really nice. That's all I've got.
Commissioner Braun?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Pearson?
Nothing.
Commissioner Warnock?
Real quick, this weekend is Cabin Fever out at Moore's Chapel, and it's a great opportunity to come out and see events going on around, or I should say rather, activities that will be available starting, you know, here soon in different parks and recs and areas and with different councils, there's some, some gardening clubs, fishing clubs, a whole bunch of different outdoor-type organizations. So if you're ready to get out of being cramped in the house in the cold and the snow- So if you're ready to get out of being cramped in the house and the cold and the snow this nasty winter, then this is a great event to come out and see what's available, starting in April.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. I did forget this in my town report, and-
11 to 2 at Moore's Chapel.
11 to 2. I did forget to say this. Go ahead, Commissioner Orthonreese, you have something.
Do we have a date for fishing derby yet?
It'd be in May. I'll have to, yeah.
Look forward to that.
I did have another Realtor reach out to me about interest in the town of Rising Sun. So if you are interested in selling your home, reach out to a local Realtor, because they continue to contact me, because there's a lot of interest in the town of Rising Sun. They are looking for homes to put on the market. According to them, prices are high and the market is low, so it's a seller's market. That's what they continue to tell me. So if you're interested in selling your home and you live in the town of Rising Sun, reach out to a local Realtor. All right. Upcoming meetings, Planning Commission Workshop, Monday, March 18th at 6:30. There's another town meeting on Tuesday, March 26th at 7:00 p.m. There's a Planning Commission Workshop on Monday, March 18th at 6:30. There is a town meeting on Tuesday, April 9th, and there are no upcoming events or holidays scheduled in March. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.